Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Exeter Planning Board, and welcoming you to the -- whoops, not the May 23 meeting. That's all I had, the June 20 meeting, June 27, 2024, in the Nowak Room. We're going to start with introductions. I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Board, and to my right is--
I'm on your left, but--
That's the left. That's the other right.
Right.
Which way you want to go?
Right, I said right.
Don't be worried.
I'm Jen Martel.
John Gruder.
What's your position?
What's your position, please, old clerk?
Yeah.
Very much.
Aaron Brown, Vice Chair.
Gwen English.
Nancy Villanueva, Select Board Representative.
Thank you very much. And Town Planner Dave is with us. We're expecting, I believe, another member from the Board on Zoom this evening, but--
Do we know?
We'll proceed anyway. The first items on the agenda are we have minutes to approve of May 23 and June 6 and June 13.
I'll make a motion to move the -- to approve the minutes of May 23.
Second?
It was a second, and any comments? We'll do a voice vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, John. Next are June 6.
I have two things--
Minutes of a sit walk, by the way.
I know, but it was a joint Planning Board and Conservation Commission sit walk, and Conservation Commission was left off. And there was one Conservation Commission member present, Keith Whitehouse.
Okay. Any comments or motion?
I move to approve the June 6, 2024 sit walk meeting minute, joint meeting, sit walk, excuse me. Let me start over.
Okay.
I move to approve the June 6, 2024 Joint Planning Board Conservation Commission sit walk as amended.
Is there a second? Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Okay, those in -- a voice vote again. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. And what's next?
June 13.
June 13, you're right.
Is that where the clerk is?
So, any comments or motion?
I will move to approve the June 13, 2024 Planning Board Meeting Minute.
A second.
Thank you for seconding. Gwen, any discussion? Voice vote, please. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays and opposed? And abstentions? None, so the minutes passed. Thank you very much. Okay, the next meeting item on the agenda this evening is a request from Riverwoods Group for preliminary site plan consultation for the proposed construction of a new healthcare center intended to consolidate the existing healthcare components of the three Riverwoods campuses into a centralized facility to be located in the property at the intersection of White Oak Drive and New Hampshire Route 111, Kingston Road. Subordinate properties located in R1, excuse me, Low Density Residential Zoning District, and its tax map passes number 97-23, and its planning board case number 24-6. This is just a discussion. No action is taken. Nobody takes any votes. We want a chance for the developer to chat with the Board and find out what our feelings are about the project. I might also indicate this is a great way that the Board likes to work because we get an idea of what's coming down the road, and it helps facilitate the whole process. So, thank you for coming and asking for this meeting. And I asked Dave if he might start it off, please.
Yeah, I do want to note that, as you stated, the applicant is requesting preliminary conceptual consultation and not a formal application. And as such, abutters have not been notified, you know, directly. It's just been noticed as a meeting. And as per state law, the Planning Board, the discussion of the Planning Board and the applicant can be, quote, "in conception form only and in general terms such as the desirability of types of development and proposals under the master plan." So, it has to be very general. I would caution the Board, do not talk about specifics. Don't get into design details. That is another level. If they wanted to go to design review, then abutters could be notified, and you could talk about design details. But I would caution the Board against getting into any details. It's a 30,000-foot discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Dave, what was yours, my friend?
Good evening, guys. For the record, I'm Eric Sowery from All This Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant at Riverwoods. I have a couple of characters here with me. I have Eric Harmon from AG Architects. He's the architect for the project here. I also have Robbie Woodburn from Woodburn &amp; Company, a landscape architect. I have Julie Clark from Riverwoods themselves, and I have Sharon Summers from DTC Lawyers. I'm going to quickly go through, get our bearings here, and figure out where we are. You all know where Riverwoods is, obviously. Town is up here, and this is Kingston Road running right through the middle here. This is the woods. This is the first campus that was built back in the mid-'90s. That's been there for quite a while. We have the ridge right in here that was built in the early 2000s, and then boulders back here, which was about 2008. And I think in 2012-ish, campus crossing went in here. That was their administrative offices. And we're looking at this section right in here, the campus crossing area. These pieces were consolidated recently into one parcel, one tax map and a lot number, so it's about 204 acres, the whole thing. And about 130 of that, 130 and change, is encumbered by easements. Most of it conservation easements, but there's also DOT easement, there's a gas line easement. You can see the gas line running all the way through here. There's a use easement and a view easement, all sorts of fund easements in there. So, that's about 64% of the site is not usable because of those encumbrances. So, what we're looking here at here is, well, I'll start with existing conditions.
Excuse me, could you move the microphone a little closer?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Better?
Better.
All right. This is the existing conditions plan from Varan Associates. The surveyor on the project north is to the right, so we sort of flipped over on the 90. This is 111 here. This is the blinking light at Riverwoods Drive, which is over here. White Oak Drive that goes out to the ridge and the boulders. Campus crossing is right in here. That's the admin building that was built in 2012. Gooch Park is also out in here. There's some pickleballs, horseshoes, there's some planter beds, so things like that. Also, two parking spaces here. Gas easement runs right through the middle, right in here. And then on this side is another property that's also been consolidated. That's a single-family home that is vacant. They use it for storage right now. It's got a garage, it's got a septic system, all the things that you would normally have with a single-family home. And then the driveway snakes out this way back to 111 down here. So, this is the approach. You go past Mrs. Hooton's Field here, and this is the approach to Riverwoods here. This is where it widens out, and the blinking light's right about here on that plan. So, what we're looking to do very broadly is a new healthcare center. Right now, with the three campuses, they have their own integrated healthcare facilities. During COVID, I think Julie can speak more to this about the need. They really recognized some problems with staffing, problems with efficiency, so they were looking to integrate everything into a purpose-built building. So, this building here has got a 51,874 square--
1,074 square foot.
Got it.
They might want to mute themselves.
All right. That's on three floors, and there's a parking garage underneath. We access at the same intersection at the blinking light at 111. The road does change, White Oak Drive does change, and that was at the request of the gas company. We've been in consultation with them for a long time now, since the beginning of the project. They own the easement, they can tell us where to put the road, and they want us to get in and out of the easement as quickly as possible. So, that's why you see that curvaceous layout there. Across the street from the building is 41 parking spaces here. This is the main entrance. It's a one-way loop, also eight parking spaces there with a portico chair. And this is a one-way loop around the back that services, services for deliveries, trash pickup, things like that, and into a little bit more parking on this side here. This is the entrance to the garage. The dog park that's there now stays, as does the two pickleball courts, and Robbie has some more information on what we're intending to do in that area. We're also looking to keep these two parking spaces unless DOT tells us to remove them. This is going to need a thorough, comprehensive traffic study. We've already started the ball rolling on that. It's going to take some time to repair. DOT is going to take their time looking at it, as usual. But that's going to look at this as well as the rest of the campus, so we're going to really look at that. As far as drainage goes, we're probably going to be under the parking lot here. We'll go subsurface in that location here. Treatment and detention, this does have to go through AOT, so we'll have state permits there. And there'll also be a wetland impact. Right now, we're about half an acre of wetland impact that will need a conditional use permit from this Board, as well as a wetlands permit from the state. The wetlands--
Could you just speak a little more slowly?
Okay. I'll do my best. The wetlands in question, this one here, this guy, and this little guy right in here, those are fairly degraded, and of course, we'll be coming for a full application. I'll bring the wetland scientists in to speak to that. Not a wetlands guy, so I'm not going to try to go down that road too far. But they've had roads across it, it's been farmed, they've got septic lines across it, all sorts of stuff, as well as driveways. So, it is not a pristine wetland. The high-value stuff is actually on Mrs. Hooton's land here. So, I think I'm going to turn this over to Robbie. How's you know? Robbie, yes.
Look what that screen does to my colors. I'm Robbie Woodburn from Woodburn &amp; Company Landscape Architecture. My job on this project is to soften the building, and we're lucky that we have good woodland cover around us, both to the east and west, and even along Route 111. So, we, you can see that we, well, I'll go to the park first. As Eric said, the park is staying where it is.
Put it out?
Yep. The pickleball courts are staying, the parking loop is staying. The gazebo, there's an existing gazebo out there that happens to lie where the building is or close to where the building is, so that's shifting. Can you point back to that?
Where's the gazebo?
Right there.
There.
And one of the sheds and the raised beds are going to move out there as well. Otherwise, it's going to stay exactly the same, with the exception of that circular driveway going through it. We've taken the opportunity to add evergreen screening to the parking lot below and in the front corner of the building where you might see it from the intersection. We've got street trees that go around that. Most of those trees, I would say 99% of them are native and in scale with the building so that they're not going to get too close to the building and have to be taken down later. It's a fairly straightforward plan that buffers the building to the extent we can and softens it, marrying it to the landscape.
I'd like to take this opportunity to point out that we did have a few variances denied for this project. This plan does not require any variances at all. It meets the 100-foot buffer, as well as the height variance or the height requirement. And speaking of that, I'll turn this over to Eric Harmon from AG Architects.
Thank you. And yes, you do get a couple of Eric's. Talking about how the site works, we did want to give you some information of how the individual building works once we're within it. And we really want to kind of go high-level, talk about the design intent and the reason for the structure, and how the structure is really meeting the needs of Riverwoods. First and foremost is the overall design of the new supportive living environment. And what we've done is we've gone with a two-story configuration where we have assisted living, memory care, and skilled environments, using the first two floors along with an entry sequence for residents and visitors. And then the building is designed to wrap around two enclosed courtyards so that residents can have secure access to the outdoors and get the sun-filled areas within their units. And then on the third floor, we are reducing the overall footprint of the floor and using a mansard treatment to have the dormer-style units project from the sloped roof. And that is where we've now met the height requirement and are no longer exceeding it with this new design. The landscape is demonstrated here to be representative of what Robbie just previously shown, but the intent is that this building will be heavily screened by the landscape, but then also attractive and fit into the context. As we get into how the building operates, we want to start with the limited impact that we're incurring on the site by bringing parking into this building. One of the concerns that Riverwoods had was visitors and family members having a comfortable enclosed area to park and not have to have concerns of weather being a deterrent, a deterrent to coming in and visiting family members. So, the enclosed parking, 64 stalls where they can enter in the garage and then have direct access into an elevator bank and vertical circulation in through the rest of the building. As we step up onto the main floor, there's a couple of key elements, and that is on the right side is the memory support households. This is an area that Riverwoods doesn't currently have, the areas to meet the needs of their memory care patients. So, we are introducing two 12-unit memory care households that wrap around the centralized courtyard. These will be designed specifically for the needs of memory care patients and becomes a very important role in the overall building. That's using the right side of the first floor. The middle is really the entry sequence and all of the amenities to draw friends and family members to this campus. One of the biggest components that you see in supportive living is the lack of visitation or the reduced travel to come and see a loved one, and it's typically because of the lack of amenities within those spaces. So, we have a centralized entry area, we have a strong reception so you know where you're going, but then we'll have large multipurpose room, restaurant spaces, fitness spaces on the first floor, and then, of course, public access to that courtyard. To the same level that we would design an environment for an independent living resident, we're bringing that to the supportive livid side, the supportive living side of the industry. As we go up to the second floor, we have the skilled nursing and the rehab component. So, all the skilled nursing residents have their own enclosed household as well and directly connect to PTOT, and then transition to the floor of assisted living, wrapping around all of the kind of centralized amenities again. The orange is where we're really drawing people in. This is an all-day dining, so if you come and visit a loved one at 2:00 in the afternoon, you can get food if you choose to. And then as we jump to the third floor, this is where the plan steps back, and we modified the overall footprint, but we end up in three individual households that wrap around that centralized core again, and this core being the dining area for these AL residents. And then we have some additional staff training area over here. So, all of the program that is being incorporated in this design, as we indicated before, is alleviating the individual skilled and assisted living components of the other campuses and unifying them into this location so that we can have better staffing opportunities, better socialization opportunities, and they can be serviced overall in a better form. The level of care is designed to ensure the least amount of mobility challenges or the movement necessary for people to enjoy the outdoors. Overall, that's the way the building lays out. And the last couple of things that I wanted to mention, the socialization in an amenity-rich environment was a key component to the design. We talked about the public spaces and how we want to design it to the level of an independent living experience, but then also the improved residences, because the existing campuses, as we've talked about their ages, were designed in a time where healthcare was treated significantly different. And as we look at how architecturally we can improve the lives of seniors, one of the places we can start is within the unit themselves. So, the footprints of these units, if you look at the left side, that's an existing skilled nursing suite. And there's enough room for a small bed, a small chair, but no opportunity to have a loved one come and comfortably sit with you. There's challenges with the operation of the restrooms and the function of the unit in a staffing-rich environment, so to be a resident having to travel around the corner or to be a staff member have to work with door swing challenges, or to be at the head of the bed and looking at a closet directly across the way. Some of those challenges were significant, and the size of the unit is just that much smaller. So, the footprint that we're working with on the scale of each individual unit has been increased about 100 square feet. But most importantly, the relationship between bed and bathroom is cleaner. Having a kitchenette is more important to the home-like environment of the unit. And then the area here where you can actually come together and sit and socialize, not needing the bed to be one of the pieces of the furniture that you have a conversation within. That's just the building block of how we're designing this building distinctly different than what is currently offered on each of the campuses. A couple of quick images that express that, and this just goes that it's not just to build a new building or just to relocate healthcare, but also to ensure that they're built with the newest and best methods in caring for seniors. The assisted living and all of the levels of care will be designed to that extent. So, each of these footprints are a little bit larger. One of the code-compliant things that we found was that loved ones, when moving to AL, still having a couple, maybe one loved one has more care needs than the other, but in a standard one-bedroom on the current campuses, a couple can't move into a unit together because of space requirements. We're, part of the mission of this is to provide better care and better living environment, so we've designed all of these one-bedrooms, even in their standard form, to be able to accommodate that couple. So, we're answering some of the market's needs and helping the seniors age in place.
All right. This is an overview of everything at the end of the day. I want to be very clear, there's a second phase to this. These three existing healthcare centers are obviously going to vacate space, so what happens with the space? The long-term plan is after the healthcare center is completed, which is right here, to tear down and rebuild each of those three existing healthcare centers into new independent living units. Each one, and you can see it's a slightly darker color here. Those footprints are smaller than the existing buildings, so have less impervious surface. They're already in developed areas. We are not going to include that with our initial planning board package, just because we can't occupy or we can't vacate that space until the healthcare center itself is built. So, that's about a year and a half to construct it, so there's no sense in going and designing and permitting this thing, and it's just going to sit there and not do anything. So, you'll be seeing that at some point down the line, but it will not be part of the initial package. But I want to be very upfront that it is going to be coming at you at some point. That's it in a nutshell, guys. See if you guys have any questions, I guess at a 30,000-square-foot level, according to Dave. I can have Sharon speak to anything you want, as well as Julie from Riverwoods, if you have any operational questions, or just questions on the site or the architecture.
Okay. Dave?
May I just interject? I think there was a lot of specific details there, specific floor plans, I mean, specific designs. I don't think the planning board can comment on any of that or ask anything. I mean, I think if you are going to get into a discussion on that, I think you should suggest design review so abutters are notified, and then you can-- suggest design review so the butters are notified, and then you can come and talk specifics, but you really need to keep it at the concept level at this point.
Thank you.
What about the butters? I mean, public.
Yeah. My table from above, come first.
Yeah.
All right, I'll open it to the public. I'd ask you to step to the microphone, please. On the old routine, state your name so the folks at home know who's speaking. Again, keep it broad and general, please.
Absolutely. My name is Karen Pryor. I'm in a butter on Pickpocket Road, and I thank the planning board for allowing us to speak on concept only. So I request the opportunity to speak to the board tonight despite the fact that this meeting is meant for plan review due to the extreme size and scale of the proposed project and the irregular path the project has taken so far. This project is at the planning board stage after being rejected outright by the zoning board of adjustment through a non-public decision to approve a lot-line merger by the planning board chair without coming before the planning board. The maneuver used to enable the lot-line merger was based upon a carefully crafted surveyor's letter of opinion relying upon a selected use of the history and facts. Although the town accepted these arguments, several attorneys that I have spoken and consulted with raised serious concerns about the legality of the merger based on the original intent of the onsite provision in the special exception requirements and the reason that the merger was done to subvert the decision of a public quasi-judicial board, Exeter's zoning board of adjustments. The reason this proposal is going forward is that Riverwoods has more money to spend on attorneys than the butters do. We are a neighborhood. This is not how our town government is supposed to work. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you.
So if I get specific, cut me off.
Okay.
Because I've been working on it since the zoning board meeting. I have PCA dementia, so if I get lost, just deal with me.
My name is Fred Byrd. I live on 80th and Kingston Road. Have you a little pointy thing?
Yeah. Let's go back there.
Yeah. I want to go back to the neighborhood so I can see.
That's all we've got. Yeah. So to the top button's the pointer.
So I'm just trying to figure out what we have here. So I live around here, and Joel Marlene live here.
Could you see that you're speaking in the microphone, please?
We're just trying to read it. So I live around, I live on this lot right there. That's Joel Marlene's. Sheila, Jeff and Beth live over here. Bill and Sue live here. This is a neighborhood. That other thing is massive. Oh, I lost it. That thing's massive. It's 200,000 square feet. I have a quarter acre, a half an acre of land in my little tiny ranch. It's not like that. I just want to make that impression.
Thank you.
So we lived in town since 1987. This is our second home in town, and we've been on Kingston Road since 1996. When we moved here, Riverwoods was already built, and you wouldn't even know that they were back there with all the trees. Until recently, seven acres behind our house were sold, and we didn't even speak with Riverwoods at any time. They're great neighbors. So Riverwoods has a big generator at their first campus. That's quite large, and when it starts, we can hear it pretty good. It comes into our dining room and our living room. But, you know, people have to have electricity, so when this one goes in, they're going to put another generator in. And I think on the concept drawing, it was on, next to Jolly Rancher Trail, with a dumpster with the receiving area. So the bolder's concept drawing shows that, like I just said, they're going to have a generator. So I'm going to have both these generators going on in stereo. And their residents don't hear any of these. They're off their campus. If you see the one at Riverwoods, it's way off their campus. It's on Riverwoods Road, so we all get to hear it. 400 people don't hear it. And when they put this one in, it's, the exit of River is the nickel chamber. If people are having a party on Pickpocket, I mean, or Powder Mill, I can hear that. That doesn't disturb me, but this is how the noise is. We can, when they drop a dumpster over at Riverwoods, 8:00 in the morning, we hear it. I'm not complaining, but when the generators come on, they're going to be loud. And shipping receiver, and trucks, and food vendors, and forkless, and handjacks, and So the conscious, the concept drawing also showed shipping receiver, the dog court, tennis courts, being moved towards, but I just heard they're going to be staying where they are near Sue and Bill's house. But I can just imagine the trucks, the pallet jacks, the workers downloading, the constant tenants' balls disturbing our peace and quiet. So I would like to ask the planning board if they would ensure that the buffer is heavily, heavily, heavily buffeted with spruces, hemlocks, pine trees, Douglas firs, these type of trees and bushes to keep Kingston Road very country and very scenic. We've been there for 30 years. It's a country road, and there's a lot of neighborhoods off of Kingston Road, and I would get to that after. Just keep it as dense as possible. The idea is to block all the noise and all the lights. It's three stories. Where I live, I'm not going to see these lights. But like Jeff and Beth, they live right across the street. Right across the street. You know, and then it's a three-story building, but how high is it on the land? How much higher is it going to be? You know, is it sea level? And don't use any leaf trees, because this is New Hampshire. Leaves on the trees for six months. This is a portion of Kingston Road. They showed at the zoning board meeting, they're tearing down that house. They're going to put the parking lot there, and the old lady wants her land. And there's another house, and they want to put trees along Route 111 so you can't see when you're driving up. But if they leave trees, six months out of there, you're going to see this gigantic warehouse. I thought they were going to be Band-Aid stations. I didn't even know about this until a couple of weeks before the zoning board meeting. I thought they were putting little Band-Aid stations, and I had no idea it was gigantic. So the other suggestion I have with this is the concept, if they would change their entrance to where they go underground for the parking, put it where the generator and shipping receiving is, get that all off of Jolly Rancher Trail. Someone's already mowing Jolly Rancher Trail. I used to walk and snow that, snowshoe that all the time, but it's so well-kept now, it's lost its flavor. I don't even go out there anymore. It has boards everywhere so people don't get their feet wet. That was the whole point, is seeing the green kids out there and get wet. If they could, if it's a concept, bring the entrance to the other side for cars just to go in, how many visitors are going to have a day? But the generator's going to come on. If there's an H V H C unit over there, it's going to come on. Shipping receiver's going to be bringing up food. I see them all the time every day as it is now for deliveries for everybody in town. So this is just more vehicles coming to town. The other thought is traffic. So my wife and I, you know, we're retired too. We refused our emergency lights to get out of my driveway on 111 for at least three years now. It's just so much traffic. No one will give way. And many times, I'm going to church in the morning, we back right onto 111, and as we get to the flashing light, more often than not, the car that was just in a big hurry and stupid tailgating us just turned on Riverwoods Drive, or Oak Drive, White Oak Drive, perhaps their employees, perhaps their visitors, perhaps their vendors. So way back in 2003, I requested, in New Hampshire, DOT to reduce the speed limit from Cross Road to Chambered Lane, and they reduced it from 40 to 35. I asked for 25. So it's 21 years later since I asked for that request, so I'd like you to keep in mind, according to DOT, because I have my letters here from way back when, they said it should be noted that by law, only local authorities, I wanted it 25, only local authorities may post as low as 25 on local highways. The section of the road posted 25 is town-maintained. The state may post as low as 30. By law, this is reserved for urban residents. And that's getting back to all the neighborhoods that are off of 111 now, you know where they are. They're all over 111. So that's a lot of traffic. We've seen a lot more traffic in front of our house since, because before they built 101, we had all the traffic. We go from here to Nashua, and it all disappeared, and now it's all back. And it's because of all people coming to work here, people who live here now. So I'd like you just, if the town could request DOT to really reduce that speed limit to 25 miles an hour all the way from Cross Road all the way down to the bridge, Little River Bridge, because people pass in front of my house every single day. It's double line, motorcycles, trucks, cars, everybody. Everybody passes out there. So my wife and I, we're retired. We enjoy the woods. We enjoy the river. We enjoy the beauty and peace and the quiet of Kingston Road. Riverwoods should know that all your neighbors are retired. Some of the people, my neighbors, have been living there for 40. One lady's been living there for 50 years. And they're going to put this massive, massive building in the neighborhood that does not fit, you know, and if they can bury it and hide it, because the court and the dog thing, I don't even think is in a 100-foot buffer. It's on the street. I don't even think that should be there, if I'm reading it right. That should be someplace else, because that should be 100 feet of buffer. And it's an outhouse, and a gazebo, and a tennis court, and you can see everything right up to the office building that they're going to tear down. I would think that 100 foot should have trees in it and bushes and not a dog-walking So we've been there for 30 years. We've never complained to Riverwoods. They're really good neighbors, and I personally don't care if they put the building. I just don't want to see it. I don't want to see the lights. I don't want to hear the noise. I also know several residents in Riverwoods who live there who want their little stations still. They don't want to have to leave and go across 101. They're 85, one woman's 90 years old. She doesn't want to have to go to the station up there. That's not what she signed up for. And they told me that there's other ones that, like the husband's in the building, across the street from where she lives. Well, now if they're going to move her husband all the way down to this thing, it's not what she's buying for. She doesn't want to take the cab that they're going to provide her to go all the way up front. She wants to take a cup of coffee, walk across the street, and see her husband. So I thought it was going to be a mini-hospital, frankly, and it's just too large. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. And I prefer that Riverwoods not become the villages of Exeter, like the giant retirement community in Florida. Thank you very much for your time, board.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Take you next, and then ma'am, you'll be next, please.
I think this is conceptual, but we spoke of...
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Excuse me? My name is Paul Roburge. I live on 15 Pickpocket Road in what is still known as Mary Morse's house.
Okay.
After 45 years.
Good to know.
The big old, for those of us, the big old house. It's about to celebrate its 300th birthday. It's a house we love. And it's about the property that we have, which is, if you face, now, if you face Timberlane, which was put in, what, 10 years ago? So if you face Timberlane with the house on the left, and our driveway is actually parallel to Timberlane, and when they built, it was under the, with the understanding, the written, a written statement or whatever, that they would put in, in the property, yes, that's where we are, and, no, really? Yeah. Oh, no, we're on the left.
Left of that.
That little one.
This little one, okay.
Actually, we're bordered on three sides of Riverwoods, where the butters. And but to the right of our property, between Timberlane and our property, our driveway, the land drops, certainly because the roads were built higher than the, I know the water wants to come off those hills and just go down. So it was agreed that Riverwoods would plant trees, ornamental native trees, like they're going to do, you know, at this place, and take care of the invasives, which were there starting out, and create a ditch so that the water, which does come across our driveway down into that sunken space, so it could go under the Timberlane, which had become a dam. Well, they did that, and they immediately ignored it. Right now, if you go and stand on Pickpocket Road, right at that point where my property and Riverwoods property is, you will see to the right a horrible mess, I mean, really a horrible mess of invasives that have killed most of the trees that they planted. So when they promised to have a beautiful view that will shield this monstrosity of a building, then I really don't have any faith that they will keep that screen, they will ignore it, you know, once they don't have, once they don't have to keep it up. And I have been spending several years now, and by the way, I'm 82 years old, and my big worry is actually an institution that is supposed to care for the elderly. I think it's very ironic. Anyway, I have spent my springtimes digging out, chopping down the stuff that comes over, the invasives and the mess that comes over from the Riverwoods property into my property. And also, the water backs up because they never maintain the ditch, and they never maintain their trees that they planted, you know, as a requirement. In fact, this spring, I met a Riverwoods resident who is down there, an elderly gentleman who is down there actually picking up the logs and debris that Riverwoods had on their property because he didn't like the way it looked, and creating piles for them to cart away. Whether Riverwoods ever thanked him, I don't know, but they have not carted away the piles of lumber. So I don't have any faith in...
And that's a Riverwoods resident, is it not, Mr. Roburge?
It was a Riverwoods resident, you know, probably older, I think, older than I am, who is down there, you know, actually toting this debris of lumber and creating these piles of stuff because of how awful that is. And so, you know, I just want to say conceptually that I have very little faith that Riverwoods is going to care about the neighborhood once it has what it needs to have. And let me see if there's anything else. And if anything, they should take care of their invasives, because that's going to spread out through the neighborhood and we'll all suffer. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. This lady was next, then I'll take you. She's the one on my left.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My major concern is the...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, my name is Sheila Grinnell, and I live now at 78 Kingston Road, and my property was recently bought by Riverwoods. And I think that that was to enable the under-the-road configuration of the whole property, which allows legally them to make one big health center instead of the distributed model that they had before. My concern is the water table. And when I look at that big proposed building, all I think about is how much they're going to have to dig into the ground and how much more the water table is going to be disturbed because since the recent construction of these properties, my land, well, what was my land, was the leftover piece from the Belmont Farms, the old, us old Darfers might remember the... The old, us old Darfers might remember the Belmont Farm. It's now where that sign company is with the large house, Colonial. Yeah, yeah, I see some nods, yes. That was the grandparents of my husband, and they had 100 acres around. I'm down to seven acres now. And that was a cornfield for decades. So that indicates how arid it was and how workable it was. The last couple, well, since Riverwoods has built boulders and ridge, my whole backyard, which is about five acres, is waterlogged. It took me, I think, three months to find somebody who could actually get on that land and mow it. I'm not the only property owner who was affected in this really dramatic way. There are people who, well, one family I will not mention, but they had to build a new septic system. And on their property, they hadn't, didn't have the perp capacity to build them. So now they have this mound that they had to create and build their septic system into that. So I'm just very worried about what the subsequent disturbance of the water table will be and how it will affect all of us abutters. I mean, there are many of us who have lost the use of property and land because of the water distribution with, that came about as a result of boulders and ridge. Before those properties were developed, the backyard, my backyard, which is about five, six acres, was a perfect land. You know, my husband was out there mowing it, and we could grow things, just like the old Belmonts did 100 years ago. It's impossible. It's a different kind of landscape altogether as a result of the construction of the ridge and boulders. When I see that big monster up there, I think about what's going to happen underneath it and how much that construction underneath is going to augment the current difficulty with the water table for all of us neighbors. So I really encourage people to take that into consideration. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am? Please?
My name is Ruth Hooton. I live on 61 Kingston Road. I have 12 acres right between Riverwoods. I'm between the old Dotton Place and the old Duffin Place. You probably know me. I'm the white fences right on 111. If you could put back the first one where it shows the original concept?
There you go.
One more.
One more?
Yeah. Okay. In March, I was showed this by Riverwoods, and I pointed out what I had in mind. This is not flat land. This is a slope. Their land is above my land. It slopes down into my pond. So if you plant, if you get a parking lot up there of hot top, you're going to have runoff off into my plant, onto my pond. You're going to have, you're going to have more water going down. You're going to have, you know, more runoff into the pond. My land is all wetland next to them. So the road that they want to do port borders wetland. And I can tell you right now, and I've told Riverwoods before, I'm not selling one inch of my land. So that road is going to be right next to wetlands. And you're going to have lights up there. They showed me the map, and they actually drew a line from my house over there, and there would be light coming into my house. And I don't care how much trees you put up and bushes. I live right surrounded by Riverwoods. I see lights all year long. Right now, there's not many, because I've got a lot of trees. I've got acres around me. Come wintertime, I can see more and more lights. So if I've got that over there, I'm going to have light shining right into my house. So I just wanted to say, I agree also about the water. I lived through the ridge being built. I know what blasting is like out there. We felt it. We had Riverwoods come in and take pictures of our house to make sure our walls never, you know, got damaged. We had our water tested. We did everything, because we knew what that blasting was going to be like. That's going to be closer to my house. And that's going to be closer to a lot of water, too. So I have a lot of concerns, even though I have 12 acres and I'm not that close. It's still going to be light. It's going to be noise. It's going to be water. It's going to be a lot of things. And to my mind, I moved up here 20 years ago to live in a rural area. Me and my horses and my house, my husband, my dogs, we didn't want to live into a cityscape. And I feel like that's what this is going to become. It's going to become a little mini-cityscape. And I'm retired, too. I lived there all the time. I'd welcome neighbors as it is. I don't have neighbors on either side, because Riverwoods isn't doing anything with any buildings, and not a lot of mowing gets done there either. So I'm just really concerned about what's going to happen over there. Even though I have a lot of land around me, it's going to affect me. So that's my position.
Thank you very much. Yes, next, please.
Actually, I have a little handout. It didn't come out as big as I had hoped, but...
You can share it. I can share.
We need one for the record.
I'll give you mine and share.
Okay, just give it to me.
Okay.
I'll give it to him after. Right now, it's on it.
Okay, I'm Laura Davies. I live on Pickpocket Road, and I am a real estate professional, valuation professional. So I look at the plans, and I'm just astonished at the size of the building that they want to put here. They have existing healthcare in all three facilities, the way the zoning was written the way they wanted it. It was done to accommodate them. They were approved as a special exception for what was already proposed. This is not, this was not part of their special exception approval. And yet, here they are, bypassing zoning because of this lot merger thing that they did. So just to give you an idea of the scale of this, the YMCA on 56 Linden Street is 30,935 square feet. This proposal, I'm not sure exactly how big it will be, but it will be between 155,000 and 207,000 square feet. So that's, what, six YMCA's in our neighborhood, low-density residential neighborhood? Hanafords, 137 Portsmouth Ave., 65,000 square feet. This is 155 to 207, so that's three Hanafords. Low-density residential, sure. Hampton Inn, 59 Portsmouth Avenue, 69,700 square feet. Again, close to three Hampton Inns is being proposed on this corner, very visible corner. The former high school at 30 Linden Street is 205,936 square feet. So this proposed building will be on a scale of the former high school, the old high school on Linden Street. And Exeter Hospital at 3 and 5 Alumni Drive is 291,512 square feet. This is all according to the tax cards. I'm just using the town's figures. So that is, this is like two-thirds of Exeter Hospital. No zoning board approval, some gimmicky lot merger thing that seems questionable legality. And now they're going to be able to put a building of this size and scale here? This seems like not the proper course, that they can do this without having to go before, or that, well, they did go before the zoning board. They were refused. But that they can do this without any kind of amendment to their site plan or their special exception approval. So this would make this property the largest building between the railroad tracks and 125. And I guess I'd just like to know how big the existing administration building is. Does anyone know that? I'm guessing it's under 10,000 square feet. Just picture that. This is 20 of those, okay? This is a very massive improvement, and it has gone through an irregular process, and it doesn't seem right to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, anybody on the board have some questions or concerns?
One more public.
Oh, one more speaker? Yes, please. Excuse me, I didn't mean to miss you.
I'm Sheila Roper, 15 Pickpocket Road. Between the corner of Pickpocket Road and the Brentwood town line, there are 14 visible houses. There are more in Pickpocket Woods, et cetera. Nine of those houses are occupied by retired or semi-retired people. And I think, I look at the academy, it's a town within a town. It has its own population, its own facilities, its own security, its own grounds. But it's been here for almost, what, 230 years? Riverwoods has been here about 30. It has its own population, its own security, its own facilities. And we have to be aware of that, that, you know, a town within a town isn't the town. And I feel, I always feel threatened. You know, I've lived there for 50 years, and I never know. Every time I see a ribbon on a tree in the woods, I panic. It's just to think about that. And I'd like to leave you all with the thought, if you haven't driven down North Road in Brentwood to see the new Registry of Deeds building, that building is 100,000 square feet. It is mammoth. It dwarfs everything around it. If you have not seen it, I suggest you take a field trip and take a look at it. Thank you.
Gwen?
Anyone else?
Not at this time.
I'll start off by saying, I think, I think Riverwoods is an exceptional facility. I think they do well taking care of the seniors who have chosen to spend the rest of their years there. I think those that have made the choice to be there are happy. Maybe one partner would prefer not to be there because they miss their old home, but I think, I think Riverwoods provides them with good care and all the necessities that they require. That said, I've been really concerned about this project since I first heard of it. I was very concerned about the fact that people who were needing to be in higher-level medical care would be separated from their loved ones, separated from their families. I didn't like the idea that they'd have to get in some kind of a vehicle to leave their building and winter, summer, spring, fall, have to go, have to arrange for transportation. I don't know how that is being set up, and that's not for me to discuss tonight, but that seemed like an awkward and unwieldy process for elderly people to have to go through. And that worries me. On a deeper level, it really worries me that there are people from the woods having to cross 111 to get to this facility. We've heard tonight how much traffic there is. I've walked on that road. I walk on the trails. I see it. I know that it's a busy road. And I know that intersection, when you go from Riverwoods Drive over to White Oak Drive, that's not a fun road to cross. And now we're going to have even more traffic with people all day long, all evening long. I want to go see my husband. I want to go see my wife. She's in this facility. That scares me. It also doesn't seem environmentally friendly to me, because that's a lot of vehicular traffic that is going to be spewing out, things that we are trying to cut back on. I also have given a lot of thought to this, and I guess I'll put in a request for some numbers before we leave tonight. But I would like to know what the ratio is of residents to staff. And staff, I guess, would include food service and nursing and medical care. Because I'd like to know if we are increasing the number of residents in this facility. And if so, I don't see how that's going to really address the big problem, which is getting nursing staff and getting support staff. And I really wish that there had been more creativity and maybe a consideration to put in some housing, some housing that is affordable for nursing staff. Because people coming out, I think I've read recently that the average price, the average age of nurses now is in the late 40s. So we've got young kids coming out of nursing school. They can't afford to live in Exeter. They won't be able to live in Exeter for, God only knows how long. The prices keep going up. No one can, no one starting out is able to be here. And for them to have to travel from, I'm not sure where the next affordable place is, but it's going to be a challenge. So, I mean, I thought, first thought, gee, why don't we just leave the medical facilities where they are and somehow provide housing that is affordable for people coming in? I think Riverwoods could figure that out. They're spending a lot of money on this building. Maybe it could be put to a different use, but that's, that's for you all to decide. I'd also like to see a master plan, because the last time we were, I was on the board when the boulders and the ridge were both built. And I think the parting words to everybody were, I think someone in the audience asked if this was it, and they said, oh, yeah, we're, yeah, we're done. Well, here we are. And that was a long time ago, and I understand that things happen. But I'd love to see, you've got, you've got now, you've got 20, almost 20 and a half acres. Some of it is on Kingston Road, some is on Pickpocket Road. And I just would like, it would be, it would be good, I think, for the board to know, if you all know, what the proposed use of those properties is, and if that can kind of be kept into consideration, and if maybe we can look at a big picture going forward. So breakdown of numbers, ratio, I'm very worried about the water. I've seen Mrs. Hooton's land. I've seen that, I've seen that field totally flooded. It was a few years ago. But you had a pond. It was a lake. And I've walked on the property many times. It's around the pickleball court. And that's like walking on a wet sponge for a good part of the year. So I, I totally realize that there's, there are water issues, and I'm not sure how those are going to be addressed, but I am, I'm thinking about it. I guess that's it for now. I don't want to go any deeper. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I can go.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to ask that applicant, if they, no, I find it interesting that at the conceptual meeting, we've heard from a lot of good abutter feedback, but no one actually has a resident. Are there any residents here?
I don't know.
I'd like to address that. If I could.
Sure. Step right up to the microphone. It's still, floor is open.
I am not a resident of Riverwoods. And Ms. English, I appreciate your attention to the Riverwoods residents. One, several things I'll say is, I know there's a lot of Riverwoods residents, because I have friends that have family there, and many of them are very resentful of what is being proposed. Because what they bought into was individual healthcare units, not a consolidated unit. I understand and respect that the nature of healthcare has changed. I absolutely do. But Riverwoods, that this is their area of expertise, and the fact that they didn't see the writing on the wall two decades ago is really pretty sad. I think the other piece, and it's been brought up, and several of you have been on planning in the past, we have been put through Riverwoods for three decades. Three decades we've been going through this. And I hate to say it, but there's actually emotional trauma that goes through this. You've heard it from the Roburges. You've heard it, the Goodenoughs, who have not... You've heard it from the Roberges, you've heard it, the good enoughs who have not spoken tonight, there are several of us. When we went through, when the ridge was, when the boulders were being built, we had Riverwoods coming on our properties, testing our wells without permission. I had yardage ripped up without permission. We had promises from Riverwoods that they would provide shelter, you know, what's the, you know.
Screening.
Thank you, screening. We had to do it twice, only at the threat of lawsuit. We, lighting, we had to do it under the threat of lawsuit. The previous town planner had to do it under the threat of lawsuit, over and over. Riverwoods has promised to be good neighbors, and they have not. And what's even worse now is they're not even being good stewards to their own residents. And they're, many of their residents are afraid to come before you and tell you exactly how they feel. Excuse my red face.
Please.
I'm Sharon Summers, Donahue, Tucker, and Chandela. I'm the attorney for Riverwoods with regard to this project. I'm going to respond directly to your question, Erin.
Sure.
Which is that there are no residents here tonight, you are correct. This is supposed to be a conceptual consultation in which we're simply presenting a plan to you. We have been all along in close contact with residents, there's a resident task force right now, and I would imagine certainly that as, and, and they were also participants in the, the ZBA proceedings, as the application process moves forward and we submit a formal application, you will see a presence here of the Riverwoods residents. But it's premature to have them here now, and I take exception to a number of the comments that were just mentioned, which seem to suggest that Riverwoods residents have been precluded or, or taken out of the entire equation in terms of conversations, and that could not be further than truth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was talking, actually.
Yeah, he's still.
So.
Relax.
So I'm not trying to be rude. I am known to be rude, I don't mean to be. So I was going to say, I appreciate the comments of the public, I'm not a direct abutter, I live, I'm a newbie, I've been in town 20 something years now, and I've heard the construction from where I am, but, you know, people had to listen to my neighborhood when I went into, so, I mean, it's all relative to, it's not fun when it's in your backyard, for sure, but it's part of the balance of private property rights and people doing what they are allowed to do on their property. And as far as I'm aware, the permits that were achieved prior to getting to this conceptual plan were done properly. I'm, I'm aware of a few of things, like the lot line adjustment, I think all that was actually done properly. I do, I do want to bring that up, because that would be very concerning to me if that was a legitimate illegal maneuver, as has been suggested this evening. I don't think that is true. If, if it was true, I'd like to see some facts to that matter, because that would be a very relevant issue. I mean, some of what Mr. Sari talked about early on will be addressed through this process. The, Eric's a great engineer, does speak fast, so I know the language, and I'm still following quickly, because I'm getting older, my hearing's not what it used to be. So AOT plan is an alteration of terrain, that, that's a big one, because this is a pretty, this is a big project. This is not doing nothing on a, on a piece of land, this is a major alteration of, of terrain, and they have to go through a pretty serious state process there, as well as, he did bring up that they are, I think he said, already started a traffic study.
Yes, we need to start preliminary numbers to file with DOT.
Yeah.
Which gets us a scoping meeting several months down the road when they finally get around to it.
Right. So they'll, that is part of this process as well, which it should be, I mean, both things are completely appropriate, but they are being addressed at a level beyond the town of Exeter, to the state level, although we can put additional requirements as a board and as a town also. Wetlands impact is something this board, I think, has historically and will continue to be very sensitive to, so that was brought up as well, and I know that they'll be going through a state and local level for that to be done properly. We generally do get into pretty significant dialogues in, on this board regarding landscaping, we have a landscape expert, I would say, on our board, who really helps us with that, understanding trees a lot.
There are a lot here, right?
Well, a couple here, a couple here. I won't say your nickname, okay? I'll get in trouble if I bring that up. They know a lot more than I do about that stuff, but definitely understand the difference between a tree that is evergreen and one that drops its leaves, so.
Thank you.
And it does help with the lighting. We also do get involved with any light emanating from the site going beyond the boundaries, that's something that we really do look seriously at as well. And as we go through this process, it's hard for us to go backwards, so if there's stuff that didn't get properly done in the past, or wasn't maintained in the past, I mean, we can certainly do our best to ensure that things are good going forward to the best of our ability. I do think there are potentially some better mechanisms within the town for following through on maintenance requirements that are sort of associated with improvements. The idea is not to plant a bunch of trees and then get through the approval process, plant them and let them die, or let them get overtaken. It does, I've been on this board long enough to have seen in different neighborhoods how it's handled differently. Sometimes it is the neighbors that actually take on the role, that might have been somebody else's. A lot of times, in a situation like this, it's a private group, so Dave has a system now for that, that we use, where once a year, I would think, we're reviewing that type of stuff, if that's part of our approval, potentially. We do that a lot with homeowners associations, which this somewhat has a little bit of that element to it. I'm trying to stay very conceptual right now. I did wonder about, this is maybe borderline, Dave, if this is too much, let me know. I do, it does look to me like the, the stuff in the upper left corner is in that buffer.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that, that's been there for a while, I'm not sure when it was done, I can try to find out.
It would be interesting to know, just to know, for the history of it, you know?
The pickleball court was part of the original approval.
We figured it must have been, yeah.
Yeah, the, the dog park as well.
Was it? Yeah, I figured it must have been, yeah. So sometimes when that's there, I mean, it is what it is, it's, I don't, I think Mr. Sari brought up that there were no variances with this plan, I think they had originally looked to get height, primarily height, right?
Height and the 100-foot buffer.
Yeah.
So we shrank the building, brought the roof down, the reason we went for the height variance is we wanted the gable look.
Gotcha.
It looked better, in our opinion.
Sure.
So we were able to bring it down to meet the 35-foot height requirement by going with the mansory.
Mansory, yeah.
Eric designed.
It's a nice design, actually.
It looks good, yeah. And then we, we scrunched everything within the buffer itself.
Okay.
The result of that is we had a little bit more welling impact than we were looking to do, unfortunately, but that's, zoning board kind of tied our hands in that regard.
Okay.
It does open up some more space for additional buffering, though, on some lines, so I think they will look at that as we get deeper into it.
Yeah. That's good, that, I mean, that, I think that's it for me, at this point.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Microphone, please. Sorry to make you nervous.
The TV can't pick it up if you don't speak into a mic, so anybody that need, we need it for the.
Our folks are very anxious to know who we're saying what.
Okay. I know who I am, Sheila Grinnell. I live at 78 Kingston Road.
Yes.
Which is right at the intersection of Pickpocket and 111.
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I have a question. Who is, or what body is responsible for researching the impact on water tables and surrounding areas on big construction like this, especially when you're talking about so much construction underground? What body is responsible for that?
DES.
Yeah, statewide, Department of Environmental Services.
So, are they, how are they represented on the boards here, the zoning and the planning, and how do we get that kind of consideration involved early in the process, so people aren't waterlogged the way I am now?
There's a lot of state involvement with most projects, depending on the scope and size of it, and what the condition is. You got wetlands, you got DES down your neck.
Yeah. This is not a wetlands issue.
And then typically, I suspect that they have, that they, the developers, have a soil scientist in terms of the soil on the site, and questions that they have to handle there. How to, how are you going to manage the stormwater, that's a big one.
Yeah.
And, and one thing I would add to what Erin said is, they will have to come up with a management plan for the stormwater, they have to report annually on that, and that's the way it happens now. So any big project comes in, we got to know that the water is not going on the neighbor's land, is properly draining, is not, is being cleaned, if that's necessary, before it leaves that site. Now that requires a whole bunch of stuff.
Right.
And there's, there are so many techniques, I don't want to get into that, but, so the state is much involved, anything to do with the traffic, of course, is Department of, of DOT, and.
Yeah, I raised the.
We're familiar with them, they work with us, they work with towns, they work with developers, that's their job.
Well, I would question how well that judge, job was done, if all us abutters have been inundated with water since the construction of the ridge and boulders. Shouldn't that water issue have been anticipated when boulders and ridge were, were being constructed?
Yeah.
Yeah, should have been.
But it wasn't.
Should be. Now, Dave, did you have a comment?
What I can say, I don't know exactly what year was this, but I know stormwater regulations have gotten consistently much better.
Yes.
In the last 10 years. So like, in the 1970s, people built parking lots, tilted it, and, and just could flood their neighbors, and, and then we realized, people realized, like, wait a minute, we need regulations. So I don't know what the regulations were in place, but we really updated our regulations in 2018, made some significant improvements, I think, to the stormwater regulations. Still, though, you're still going to get volume, more volume leaving the site when you add impervious surface, Erin.
Exactly.
Our regs, though, require, peak rates of runoff can't exceed the pre-development rates of runoff. So if, like, it comes off at 10 CFS, you know, maximum, right now, after post-development, it comes off maximum at 10 CFS, but it's holding it back, but that doesn't say anything about the volume. The volume could very well, or likely increase, offsite.
Especially with all that underground construction.
But it's, yeah, it's what our regulations, you know, require.
Yeah.
We don't require that.
That's not protecting the interests of the abutters at all.
I would have to look into that, like, because I don't know where, you know, water has to go somewhere. I mean, when you build a house, it has to go somewhere.
Sure, but maybe not in all our yards and in the.
Well, any impervious surface.
100,000 square feet, and where's it going to go?
Well, I don't want to get into specifics here, I think we're getting into specifics.
All of our land is wet, we just spent, we spent thousands of dollars remediating our basement because of everything that's happened with, at the ridge, so, I mean, it just goes on and on, or boulders, it just goes on and on. And you say it doesn't matter what happened in the past, but it's, it's a building block approach.
Well, the other thing.
It's been nailed, over and over again.
The other thing that's happened, we have a whole, a whole lot more rain and precipitation we have.
Exactly right.
We used to talk about the 50-year storms, we're not talking about 100-year storms, they're talking about 200-year storms now. And that, you know, we're not getting what Florida gets, yet.
Yet.
But 20 inches of water in, in 24 hours is a lot of water. So it's, you know.
So we need to be proactive in this.
And we are, I mean, as Dave says, it has changed.
So, Mr. Chair, to your point, that's, we need to take a look at that when you're looking at a 200,000-square-foot building.
Yes.
And that impervious surface.
Yeah.
But I was, I mean, you must remember the days when we want, someone wanted to bring Walmart into Exeter, and we were like, no.
Yes.
And that didn't happen, remember? Well, this is the equivalent of a Walmart.
Mm-hmm.
On Pickpocket Road corner. I mean, I'm really sorry, but I mean, to, to Mrs. Roberges' point, we are all retirees who live down there. Should we all just move and sell it off to Riverwoods now? Maybe we just move in. Would you, would you have a share?
Sure. Thank you, ma'am.
You got to go to the mic.
Please use the mic one person at a time, thank you.
The boulders and so on, that, while we've got hydraulic engineers and so on, and I didn't want to bring up the subject, because you never know, you know, whether water was going to go, but we've lived there almost 50 years, and I have water running, yeah, I have two acres. The back acre is almost, is not livable. You know, water runs through it now, it does, it's like a stream, and I had to do a makeshift bridge. I do sugaring, and I have maple trees, and I'm afraid they're going to die, because they're, you know, the water runs through them, you know, it's, it has happened, and I wonder if these studies ever consider the fact that global warming or whatever is causing increased rainfall, that we think, oh, it hasn't rained this much in the past 20 years, so, you know. The boulders is this big lump that has obstructed water, natural course of water, which is to go from the hill down to the, down to the river.
Mm-hmm.
And it is just now running through our land. I've, I've had a river running through, or a stream running through, which I'd never had before, as late as June, earlier this month.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that has to be taken into consideration, I'm sorry, but.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I help you?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a joint in here, an engineer.
I've been trying to stay quiet, my name is.
If you do a good job.
Bill Goodenough, I'm at 4 Pickpocket Road. I'll tell you where this water is going. Jolly Rand Trail is the lowest part of that whole piece of property. All the water goes down Jolly Rand Trail, and you go look at my property, there's a culvert that goes under the road, and it doesn't take much of a rainstorm, all the water goes right across our yard, and it's so deep that I have to go along Pickpocket Road to get to my barn. I can't go there directly, because there's too much water. And that's, well, just go and, and look at that. Our property has, I don't know what it's called, but it's a, a circle of boulders, where the culvert comes under the road, and the water is distributed among these, these boulders. But then it goes right across our property. And I just have one other comment, we're talking about the size of this monster, if you consider the volume of this new monster, it's 140 times the size of our house. Just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the board. John, or Jen?
Irene, I think our esteemed colleagues have really made some good points. I think, I would definitely echo what Gwen said, that I'd be interested in seeing a more detailed master plan, you know, the numbers and numbers of residents and, you know, unit changes and future construction projects and all of that, it'd be really interesting to see.
Your house is covered.
Yeah, can I, I'll just, can I add a few?
Oh, yes, please.
Thoughts? So obviously I'm seeing you all taking some mini-nouts, so I'm hoping, I'm assuming that when, and if you come back, a lot of these really serious concerns will be addressed.
Yeah, well, it's going to be the complete package.
And the other thing, I'm going to just make a suggestion that's not a planning board purview, but I will hope that Riverwoods offers transportation to their residents when this comes back.
Yes, that's on the table as well.
Thank you.
I just have a kind of a question for thought, and that is, how was this particular slight, site selected?
Interesting question. It's really the only place available. I spoke about easements.
In terms of the land that's available.
Exactly. Let me go. The green is conservation area, which we can't touch, and there are other easements where we also can't go. We've got, this is a used easement here, we can't go in there, you can see the gas line, some of which is outside of the conservation easements. There's a view easement here, and there's a DOT easement here. So the only contiguous areas that aren't in some sort of easement is the remainder of the Grinnell piece, which has the 100-foot buffer all the way around it, which, you know, you got a nice little pinch point there, plus. know, we got a nice little pinch point there, plus it's pretty darn wet, as we heard, so that's all wetlands. And then we've got this area here. That's it. It's the only large contiguous area that's mostly upland that's not encumbered by easements. It's the only place that we could find to fit it without seriously adjusting some major part of another campus, where we tear down essentially the ridge to build this facility, which didn't make any sense. And I think that you've got something to add.
To architecturally elaborate on that, with the changing of how they're delivering care and the evolution of healthcare in the industry over the last 30 years, the campus is aging and they are learning different methods of delivering care. To construct the healthcare model that we're talking about now, even to do it on each individual campus would require the removal of the existing healthcare component to find land where we could even replace in kind on the existing campuses themselves, which would be displacing all existing residents within that area and needing to find a place for them in the meantime, which would be building, likely on Campus Crossing, a temporary occupancy to relocate individuals into. From a deliverance of services and a disruption to the residents, this site does allow for us to construct a unified location where all campuses will come to and then not impact the residents and make them move multiple times. So from a planning standpoint and the master plan, to your point, the healthcare component being centrally located then does free up that land, that existing land, where the healthcare components are now to be additional independent living residents within or smaller than the existing footprints. So once those buildings are vacated, then we do have some buildable land. But it would be a significant stepping and moving of pieces.
Yes, sir. Want to hear from you again, I'm sure. No notes this time.
I just thought.
A good question, good.
So Fred Bird, 84 Kingston Road. So my question is, those three nursing stations, whatever they're called, band-aid stations, how many, when they take those down, how many residents you can be able to put in there? How much more revenue are you going to generate? How many more apartments are you going to build?
That will all be part of the details that we submit. We are still working through identifying that number.
Kind of like part of the plan, rip them down, build more, more apartments.
At this hearing, they, they stated there would be 17, seven zero new units.
So 70 new units there, plus how many in this other deal, 125 rooms?
So as we get into the overall count, the healthcare number would be decreased, but there will be, and there are numbers on that plan, there will be additional aisle.
I just thought of it when you were talking, it's like, okay, you're getting rid of the nursing stations and you're putting in apartments. So you're putting in this mega apartment building, hospital, nursing home, and more apartments. I just saw that.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question.
Gwen, you had another, can I?
Yeah, just a quick question. The Campus Crossing building, I just, you don't have to answer this tonight, but on, at the future meeting, I just, what happens with all the people who are currently working there? And I'm sure you're working into the plan, the parking for that, which has issues as it is now. I noticed today or yesterday that there must have been a meeting, but you're, you know, you've got the people who park in the parking lot and fill the parking lot up, but then there were probably, I don't know, 15, 20 cars along the road, so that's worrisome.
Parking.
And you can't have that if you're going to have a medical facility there.
Exactly. Parking is, is a major issue at Riverwoods. It seems that we've sort of outgrown what was originally planned for decades ago. Right now, with this proposal in front of you, we do have surplus parking, which is the goal here. As we move forward with the three other components, we're going to be looking all over campus to find anywhere we can squeeze parking and just to help alleviate that situation, because it's, it is a problem. It needs to be addressed. We've got a couple ideas, but we haven't really fleshed them out yet, and some of that is down the road in that second phase, which we will get to at some point.
Yeah, you've already added parking since the boulders in the ridge.
Yeah.
I mean, they started parking on the lawn, and then those were turned into paved areas, so I don't love that, but.
It's going to be an Easter egg hunt, for sure, but we'll try, try to do our best to help alleviate that problem.
Okay.
I've expanded parking down to the original, two.
Yeah.
Yeah. John, you had a question?
That was exactly what.
Oh, go ahead.
No, she asked. He did.
Sorry.
Well, I think that we've, Phil Mitch, you exhausted our purpose here this evening. We've heard from each other, we understand how people feel, and we again appreciate your folks tonight helping with the process. And the board has a better idea of what's happening, and I think developers have some ideas of what we're thinking.
Would you like us to come back for a design review at some point before we make a formal submission?
Excuse me?
Would you like us to come back for design review before we make a formal submission with the full design, to get a little more detail on some of these issues before we go too deep?
I don't know that we would do that.
It's up to the applicant. I mean, it's offered, you know, we offer that, but it's up to the applicant.
What's, what would really be covered at that?
You can get into more, abutters are notified, you can get into more design details. I think we went well beyond conceptual tonight. But I think, yeah, I mean, it's up to the applicant if they want to go to design review. It's just another step to have a non-binding discussion.
Yeah.
It's not a formal application. The clock is not ticking for approval or, you know, for action.
Yeah.
Approval denial, whatever, conditional approval, so I leave it up to the applicant if they want to take advantage of that.
I don't think this is a one-meeting application.
I don't think so either.
Figure it out, right? We'll hear it if you do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, thank you, everybody, for coming this evening, and.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continue to work on this.
All right, appreciate it.
Concept.
Idea, of course.
No, I think somebody gave, thank you, everyone.
One of the ladies handed that out. It's interesting.
Size, yeah. Did you get a copy of this?
Here you did.
Okay, then I'm all set. Thank you for offering.
Water.
I can scan it in my office and email it.
Water, that's the state law, okay.
Can I borrow your marker, though? That's a good idea to.
Full-time consultation.
You know, boy, didn't that help with.
As well, that's part of what we do. David Charple's has a really good plan. I would suggest offline, check in with him. Yeah, excellent guy. If you have serious concerns with it, it seems like you do, I would talk to him because he'll help you get satisfaction. And if there is stuff that was exacerbated in the past.
Okay.
As a board, what we can do is be really, really stringent on really holding up. Yeah, exactly. It has gotten better. It has gotten better, and by through that, though, you can kind of make it be better than it is now.
Are we trying to attend?
Well, that's what we actually tried to do. We did that pretty successfully up at the golf.
We're in a meeting.
Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Not that we don't like to have you around, but.
Go get a drink, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
You sound a mic.
Yes, I have a microphone, I can't say anything. I'll talk to you.
Okay, other business.
Master plan discussion?
Yeah, so you're getting ready?
We haven't had a meeting.
Oops.
Can't ever get this guy, John, to show up, so.
The only one. I've sat here last Friday morning. I'm waiting.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Not true, not true.
John.
Eating his $12 doughnut. And he's pulling your chain.
Okay.
Any master plan discussion?
You were waiting for the final.
Still waiting for the bike stuff, yeah.
Yeah, the final.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we were unable to have a master plan oversight committee meeting. We haven't had it since the last meeting. Pete's been, I don't know where he is. He was supposed to be here tonight.
I know.
I don't know what happened, but he's been unable to make it, so.
No, you can go out there and meet out there with him. Have a cup of coffee out there.
That's right, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, maybe we should post it for out there.
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
Why not?
I didn't find your card.
Excuse me for a second.
Yes.
So while we're waiting for Dave, do you want me to explain the whole, the whole boards meeting, just to fill in some time?
Sure.
So our apologies to select board, we decided to reschedule it because we weren't getting a big attendance, and it could just be the timing of the year, so we're going to look at rescheduling that for sometime in September.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we've got that notice.
Yeah, so.
I asked Barb to forward that there, buddy.
And she did.
And she did. You know Barbara, she just.
Absolutely.
She keeps us going.
Yeah.
And honest. Any land use regulations for you, your views?
No.
Nope. Field modifications?
None requested.
None requested. Credit reductions or releases?
Yeah, we released the Unitil bond for Energy Way. They made a request.
Oh, good.
That's all been done, and they, they asked for it back, and we released it.
Good, don't have to chase it later on, then.
Exactly, yes, and then Barb did do another batch.
Yeah.
So some people are going to get an unexpected check in the mail, like 20 years ago.
Christmas in July.
All right.
We're still moving. I don't know if she's done yet, but she's getting close. She's been doing great work of, of kind of clearing that out and getting everyone their money back that, you know, we can't keep and we owe them. And they never asked for it back, so it's not like it's our fault.